Mr. Morris, you will leave the question, please.
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas wide state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, everybody. Roll call, please.
Mayor Morse.
Here.
Mayor Potem Repardis, he's at a town. Audman Green.
Here.
Audman Mandray.
Here.
Auderman Jones.
Here.
Auderwoman Hoffman.
Here.
There, you do have a phone.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, we have any? We have an open public discussion, one person?
One's on the line, and then I've got Ms. Jones is signed up to speak also.
Okay, awesome. You want to do the?
Ms. Andrew, you want to start?
Sure, I'm happy to. Uh, first off, it's really hard to hear some of the people speaking. Um, so I don't know if that's a technology thing or my phone. But I do want to thank, uh, the city of Jamaica Beach for continuing to allow residents to call in. Uh, this allows us to stay safe with respect to COVID. It also allows part-time residents to participate in city government. And I truly do appreciate this on the part of the city. I know it's an effort, and I truly appreciate that. There are two items I'd like to ask about. I know it's an open meeting, so I don't know if I can get responses to these. But, um, and those of you that have heard me speak before, I'm a beachside resident. And there is this ungodly asphalt speed hump as you enter, uh, toward the beach on Buccaneer. I am hoping this is temporary. Uh, if it's supposed to be permanent, I'm hoping it gets to be more uniform and a better speed bump. If you could address why it's there and what its point is. And then my second thing I'd like to ask about is police after-hours contact. Uh, we're down here periodically, but New Year's Eve, I called the non-emergency number after dark, um, to report fireworks on the beach, and there were absolutely no answers. The phone rang and rang and rang, and that's when I texted, uh, the mayor and the two councilwomen that I have phone numbers for and said, "There are people digging holes and shooting fireworks off on the beach." I was not able to report it to police because I couldn't get an answer at the phone. And I guess I'm wondering whether hot taxes could possibly be used to support a local dispatch on holidays and during high visitor times, summer, Labor Day, Fourth of July, New Year's, things like that. If that's something that hot taxes could be used for. If they cannot, if there is a way that local residents can get in touch with the police after 5:00 P.M. without being routed to Galveston and then routed back to JP. Again, I appreciate the ability to interact with y'all remotely. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Jones?
I said I wasn't gonna talk, but I did. Happy to hear you. Uh, talking about the speed bump. Ginger Jones, 16612 Curly.
Thank you.
I can't hear anything.
Ginger Jones, 16612 Curly. Is that better?
Much better, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the speed bump at Bob Smith also, and I figure that's gonna be taken care of as the highway finishes because it looks really nice at the entrances down at some of these other subdivisions. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed. Uh, also on the sign that you were talking about, the free sign, digital sign. I think a digital sign is a great idea, but I think that size is just entirely too big for our community. And the third thing was that variance, that he wants to have six feet on an eight-foot variance. I'm a real stickler on variances because I got caught on that when we built our house. And I think taking six feet is way too much. If he only takes, you know, a couple feet, or if he was putting a lift in or something, that'd be different. But to put a swimming pool and swimming pool equipment, uh, in that area, personally, I don't think that's right. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, thank you. I guess where we should probably? I'd like to do the business meeting first and then get the, uh, easier one done than town hall is the second. We're doing, going ahead and moving some voting items for the business meeting, side of the meeting, and to, to this meeting versus doing it at the second. Uh, we ran long on last month's meeting and missed a couple votes. So I say we do that. Is that all right with everyone? And then we finish up with the more laid-back town hall style. Item for discussion in the business meeting, so this will be operated like a business meeting until we get to the town hall meeting. The first item is discussion and possible action to approve beachfront construction certificate and doom protection permit number 21-264. And, um, may I have a motion to discuss?
I'll make that motion to discuss this item.
You have a second?
Second.
As everyone knows, we talked about this last meeting, and we didn't get to vote for it. So, any discussion?
Go on this, I'm good.
I think most everyone is. Well, then, would you like to have a vote? Ready to vote? May I have a motion to vote?
You don't need a motion to vote, just ask for a vote.
If you'd like to do a roll call vote, then?
I mean, I'll motion that we vote.
Okay, you have a second.
I second that.
All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, guys. Second item, as discussion and possible action to approve two variances to the provisions of the City of Jamaica Beach zoning ordinance 2019-7. The applicant is requesting a variance to city setbacks, and it's in the attachments. May I have a motion to discuss?
I'll make that motion to discuss.
You have a second.
I second that.
Any discussion? Any questions?
I think Ginger has a very good point, I think. And this is two separate variances, right? So we don't, we could approve one and not approve the other.
One of them was for that air conditioning.
Yeah.
Right.
But it was all done as one variance, I believe.
Yeah, one's of the AC deck.
Well, but it's all put in the one variance.
One.
Yeah.
Or you can agree with stipulations.
Yeah.
Or whatever you want to.
And I, I think we ought to find out a little bit more about, uh, like we ought to table it till the next meeting to find out more about this. The deck that they're calling AC deck is 10-foot, and I think it shows stairs going up to it in another part. So maybe we ought to wait and find out whether.
I'm sorry, we can't hear at all. The volume, my volume's up to the top, but we'll go, and I cannot hear anything.
I might have to repeat myself.
I have the phone number slides to go as well.
You have your mic.
I make a motion to table. Till we get more information from the, uh?
Any other discussion?
I have some comments on this. And all due respect, Ginger. I went over and looked at the property itself. Okay, where he wants to put this is on the long side beside one of his neighbors. Okay? We've gotten one of the neighbors that, that was opposed to him doing this, but that neighbor's on the opposite side, not the neighbor that would be directly affected. Okay? Um, and as far as putting that over there, you know, in that easement area. As part of him giving us more information, I would like to see if he could get written permission from the neighbor that's most affected, as well as possible, even talking with his neighbor at 16002. Jada, I think the guy's name was? Uh, and just see if he could work something out with them to get permission to do that. He also needs to give us more information on what it looks like. As far as the deck thing, we need his drawing to see what he's really doing, what he's really gonna do. But we have made people, we have in the past, when I was part of PNC, made people move, um, their, their, their air conditioning units to the front of the house. Michael Lerner for one.
Me too.
You too. So I don't have so much heartburn with the first one. The second one, I would like to see him give us some more clarification. If he could get permission from his immediate neighbors, right? Things like that. That's all I have to say.
It already says that the notices were already mailed, though, and they had to reply by December 20th if they had a comment about it. It says that there were, um, notices were mailed to the three property owners adjacent to the proposed location.
One of them did. Jada, the guy was here.
Right. And so if they, if we were to reach out for them for comment, then how many times do we keep reaching out for comment? You see what I'm saying?
And Mark Stevens had sent a, um?
But I don't know where, which one is he? He can give us a dress.
Uh, Mark Stevens is on 15, 16560 Bellican Road. And he gave approval.
Yeah, he's two up.
It just, it just didn't clear on the, on the, on the flat. When you looked at the flat, it shows that the, the, uh, it's, it's quite a bit over the, I mean, there's a whole lot over the, uh, setback line. And then also on the flat, it shows that the, uh, there, I said stairs going up to that, about that, that deck. So he's using it for a deck, too. Not just for, yeah.
Not just for an AC flat. As I said, we need to see, have a drawing and see exactly what he's.
So just, we want to vote to table it?
Maybe he can come.
That's, I think that would be the most, if the homeowner could come, or if the engineer could come to explain it, or someone that could give us a better design.
I got you, like, he said about this other, I, I got in trouble for denying it. And I don't want to get to let somebody to say, "Okay, well, you can do it," and then, well, why does he? You know, that's the thing about, it said the president, that's.
But variances are case by case.
Yeah.
They can't go back and plead that.
Yeah.
That's why I have variances, they're individual special occurrences.
Well, then we need to know more about this one.
I'm not enough.
So, I'd like to have a vote to table this. Uh, all hands to vote to table unanimously.
I vote with the vision that we let him come back with more information.
That's all we table.
We'll see if we can get that of the president, you know?
With that in mind, we close out the business session and move to the town hall part of the council meeting. What this was more about was, was getting to see where we are at as a city and as a council and as staff to, um, to see where we were coming from in 2021 and where we're going in 2022. And I just want to read over a few of these. Um, I, everybody has, uh, the handouts, uh, that I had printed up. Uh, but the first one is the 2021, uh, project accomplishments. Uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Debbie, our city operations manager, Anna. And, uh, in this, I, I used interim, um, city administrator Brad and staff. Uh, but we reorganized city staff to enhance operational efficiency by creating and or hiring a warrants and code enforcement officer, hiring a new city secretary, creating a maintenance position, and a city operations director. Uh, we also did a creation of a, the new city website, which, uh, is, should be completed in January. We're contracting a third-party vendor to enhance the SDR compliance. Uh, we appointed city council liaisons. Development and approval of city street and drainage improvement projects in conjunction with Galveston County, which was a long time in coming. We're continuing that in 2022. Uh, we started the water line replacement throughout the city, continuing that in 2022. Started, uh, replacing and updated wastewater lift stations, which is continuing into 2022. Designed and purchased new street signs, which should be completed this month, right? Installed security cameras around the ci- city hall. Uh, improved beach access plan to promote beach beautification and public safety. Applications and approval, uh, where we got, uh, a grant in, for $267,000. Uh, we started, uh, replacing the police fleet, which should be delivered in the first part of 2022. Uh, Ms. Debbie has, um, upgraded the city internet, uh, the speed of that. We've ordered mailboxes and had them installed. Upgraded the city office 365 to help better communication and, uh, going on here at the city. Upgraded the wa- wastewater, uh, software and water software to help that, uh, come along. Uh, Munich Code, which everyone knows, that's been a long time coming. We're gonna be incorporating that into the city website. Congratulations, Ms. Debbie, you completed training and received your certificate for Public Funds Investment Act. Thank you. Uh, she, Ms. Debbie has also finalized the budget, corrected categories and line items, and balanced it. Uh, we found a company to resurface the pool for next year. Ms. Georgia and Debbie had that all done. Uh, we finished paperwork grant for Hurricane Laura, which got us $9,000. Uh, we tested all the fire hydrants and found out which ones we needed to replace, which we have money now in the budget to do that this year. Uh, obtained a permit from GLO to maintain the beach drainage, uh, which we just voted on and approved. Uh, we're gonna, we did do bar ditch drainage on Mansfield. It was really bad, and we got that done. And now we're looking at doing more in 2022. Uh, or at least setting that up because we're, as you'll see in the other papers I have, we're looking at some granting for that to do the whole city. Uh, and so realistically, we'd love to have it done towards the end of 2022. I think realistically, we're looking at 2023. But it's a, it's a major expense, and we're trying to get someone to share that with us. Uh, approved new software, uh, for code enforcement and building permits, allowing us to download plans, uh, see what's being per- permitted, and, uh, citizens to file code enforcement complaints. And it'll all be done electronically. So let's say if Anna's out or the code enforcement posies out, they can see what each other had done at any time when they were there by the notes they've left. They don't have to call, say it's a call-in, no, let's say it's a call-in to each other. We approved raises for our employees. Installed a new generator in the fire department, ordered a new generator for city hall. We remodeled the EMS department in the, uh, facility there. Put new stairs at the fire station. We got new ATVs for the city and police beach patrol. Finished updating the hazard mitigation plan, which is the basis for all our granting. And then Anna and Debbie actually hosted a health fair here to make available to employees, uh, fair-giving options for healthcare finance. And many had benefits such as Aflac, Edward Jones was here, Global Life was here, Tico, yeah, was here. So it was, it was very beneficial to them. Uh, as you see, I won't read through the carryover business because I've already just discussed it. Uh, but I do want to go over this new business. Uh, this is the things we are looking at doing. You see who, who will be involved with these, uh, plans for 2022. But we will be updating city codes and ordinances, updating, update to surrounding city rates and city building codes and fees. And what that's gonna do, um, is prolong having to raise property taxes. And, uh, we need to, you know, if we're, we're charging $20 for something, but Galveston's charging $100 for something, we need to get up to that. We're also gonna review and update city policies and procedures, both internal and external, including employees and coordinators' job descriptions, which is part of the SOPs and SOGs. Consider bringing back in-house the water department. Consider a, and we're also gonna be considering a new trash collection company. Uh, in-house, we're gonna be filling more ground loopholes that need to be done, uh, as needed and when needed. Uh, revitalization of our beautification projects, which include the sign, uh, our signs around the community at the FM 3005, all entries, all parks, and along Bob Smith. And that kind of leads into the couple of questions we had about the hump going out to the beach. That is, uh, the State Department, DOT, they are gonna be working on that and getting that smoothed out. They're doing it all over the, all over the island. Uh, residential and city cleanup, nuisance unsightly and accountability. Where you're going to get some of the people that, uh, clean up their places. Uh, establish a board of adjustments. We've got to get that done sooner than later. Security cameras at all main intersections. Developing a capital improvement plan, including making sure all city services are running above deficit, which we are not in a few areas. Consider adopting an annual cost of living, which is the COLA, for water and sewer rates, including the rates charged by Galveston for our water usage. We are in a losing battle right now with that. Replacing some park ground equipment. Uh, a new pickleball court. Uh, and we are going to be updating our new, uh, social media policies for all staff and elected officials. Improve city volunteerism to help accomplish some of our goals that we so badly need, including participation and financial investments into their and into our community. Re-implementing and actively supporting our emergency management program, SERP and Neighborhood Watch program, which I look forward, that is immediately, we need to get that done. As you see, I put deadlines where we would like to get this done, where we have our goals. That's a first quarter goal. Uh, discuss and prepare for a fire and police marina and storage facility on the water near the wastewater treatment plant, where their boats are already on the water. And I was gonna say, a lot of response time for what the water emergencies. Discuss and prepare for upgrading our wastewater treatment plant. Discuss and prepare for the bar ditches that we, I talked about earlier. Discuss and prepare a better retirement program for all employees. Consider, and also consider budget tuition reimbursement monies for our staff for their personal development and business development. Discuss and prepare for additional covered areas, parking here in the parking lot for staff and emergency vehicles, including a water sharing and power washer. That, that just helps pull on our equipment that we have. Update the ca- uh, camera here in council chambers. And this is already in the works in many areas, which still have a lot of growth to do. But the last item is we're aggressively pursuing FEMA money, available grants, county and federal aid to update and upgrade portions, if not all, of the following. Our city drainage, the wastewater treatment plant, streets, sewer lines, a fire apparatus, a second fire station, which, which I just spoke about, the marine station for fire and police, a training building and a storage building. Replacing sea legs that the West End and Galveston County so much depends on. A new fire engine, a new ladder truck, bunker gear, air packs, air refilling stations, which they need a portable one, and they need one here in the fire, uh, station. And economic development training for planning and zoning. That pretty much wraps up. That's a lot to do. I look forward to doing that. Let me see, I want to make sure I address any of this. Uh, as far as the police contact, after-hours police contact, we can talk more about that, but I know we have a non-emergency dispatch number that is, is, um, available on the website. But if you could say it pretty loud so everybody can make sure. Sure thing, come on up. This is town hall, so anybody can speak in order.
Hi, this is Sergeant Ornellus. We're asking about the emergency contact member. Um, so we do dispatch out of Galveston. We cannot change that right now unless the city wants to hire a dispatcher. But I can give you another number that is, uh, more direct to dispatch.
And, and will someone, will someone actually respond to that phone number?
Yes, ma'am. That goes to the, it's Galveston's non-emergency, it goes directly to their line. We, they have a line, but it's, uh, they don't monitor that as frequently as what's, uh, what they used to. So just let me know when you're, when you're ready to write that down, I can give it to you.
I'm ready at any time.
And that goes.
I contacted that number and no one answered.
They, somebody will pick it up because they have four or five different phones up there, and they all will ring.
Unless they're wrong.
So I'm assuming that since New Year's Eve, it was probably quite a busy night on the island.
Yeah, it, it most likely was, and that's probably why that 1800 number was not answered. But we did have officers working, um, we had two officers, including, uh, the chief himself was out here working New Year's Eve. So they, they did confiscate several fireworks along with issue multiple citations.
Is there any way to find out how many citations were issued and how the police were contacted about those? Like, was it call-ins, or did the police just, you know, drive by and notice somebody shooting on fireworks?
As far as the number of citations, I believe that Brad will have those, uh, statistics on the 17th. Um, but as far as the fireworks, normally, from my experience, we either get call-ins or it's on view. Most of the time, it's on view. We try to kind of catch them as we can get them, but that, I mean, a lot of them are, uh, call-ins as well. So I, I won't know that. You have, we'd have to go through dispatch to actually see how many calls we had, uh, in our area. We have to get that information from dispatch.
And is there, is there's no way to directly contact after 5:00 P.M. a Jamaica Beach police officer?
No, we do not give our, no, we don't give our cellphones out because we also rotate. And if you're calling, you might call a number that you think the officer's working, and that officer could be at home with their kids or trying to sleep or ill or whatever. So we have to have it go through dispatch, one, for reporting purposes, and two, just for, to protect the officer's privacy and their own individual phone number. So, unless they choose to get it out to you, so.
Yeah, that makes sense. I was just wondering if there was like a phone that, was a police cellphone that transferred during shift or anything?
No, we, we used to have one, but it stopped getting passed around, and then people were abusing it, uh, and just texting random things, and we didn't have good reporting. So that's why it has to go through dispatch.
Thank you.
And do you happen to know what the response time is from calling the Galveston dispatch?
It's usually about two to three minutes. But if you want to call the police department, uh, tomorrow, we can kind of go over some more of those questions that you may have, uh, that I can help you answer.
Okay, and I, I have no idea who I'm speaking with, so.
This is Sergeant Ornellus.
It's who I'm, sorry?
Sergeant Ornellus.
Okay, I, because I'm on a phone, I have just voices. I don't know who's speaking.
Okay.
So it would be really nice if people would identify themselves when they speak. But, uh, thank you for that number. I will, uh, post that here at my house.
Okay.
And, you know, I'm pretty sure that's who I called. It's mostly random, uh, you know, beach privacy and. And when they occur, usually by the time the police comes, the people have left.
Yeah, um if you wanna call the, like I said, call the department tomorrow, we can discuss some more of these things, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh does anyone else have anything, anything to add? Do you want to share what maybe you got done this year or which plan you're on in two thousand and twenty-two?
Uh I was, I've been in contact with the same company that did the pirate ship equipment, um and what we're working on is. Something for the older age group. The pirate ship is um a broad range. It's the, it goes from the younger kids, but it goes up through the age twelve. Um and so the thought was that the other. Piece of equipment that we have there was for the bigger kids. If you guys ever looked at them before, it was the little kids on the right and the bigger kids on the left. Um and so they've come up with a a bunch of new like modern equipment that looks very different and it's it's really um kinda pushing the edge and really like. Kinda exercise-y and and it's pretty cool. Um I haven't really narrowed anything down. There's there's too much to choose from, so my thought was maybe when the city website was out, when we can put surveys on there, that once I had it kinda like. Narrowed down to five or six to put a survey out for what the community wanted, so it's not just what Marcy wants, obviously. Um but I wanted to stay in the same color theme to match the pirate ship because I have problems with not matching. Um so I. And it obviously has to fit in the footprint that's there, and we'll go with the rubber mulch again so that that, because that's working out really well on another area. So uh they have just a lot of, a lot of choices, so. Um and then I'm gonna say the pickleball court, but trying to, we utilize part of the uh. Poured concrete and not pour more concrete. If we can make it fit in the parking uh area, and then the palapa would be kinda like your rest area. If you play too much pickleball, you know, you gotta set those shape. It's real hot here, so uh if we can kinda puzzle fit that in, and it would be like a setup here and then take it down. But just gotta get out there and get some measurements and order some equipment and we'll move forward on that pretty quick. The playground equipment, um if we buy it off the shelves, it's, you know. We'll make that happen pretty quick too. It's just a matter of choosing what we want, so. Um I I figure we just wanna go with the same company, but we have multiple contacts. Really endless possibilities if anybody has a certain desire for anything very specific that's just burning to be forward with, and I'm happy to look at that too. I've just already done a contact with our previous company because they, they were very easy to work with.
Who's that?
Well, um as it was stated in here is that um we were to report our projects that we completed in two thousand and twenty-one. And um and of course, the projects we have planned for two thousand and twenty-two, um I just wanna bring up that I I brought in stars for our troops. And that's been very successful. It's been a very positive thing. Um I've met with several people who are running for office for the state. And I've given out the stars to the troops to those people, so it's had a far reach. Um and uh it's a good thing out for our city. Um of course, the kindness project, I wanna continue with that. Um I've had very good feedback from citizens who've gotten those. And uh of course, the um Veterans Day, I think we should go in search of another one. I think that was very successful. So um and projects for two thousand and twenty-two, we really need to have a solution for beach coma for drainage, and I haven't heard anything about that yet.
It's even done. I mean, it's what we're doing.
Oh, that's. I saw the road. I thought the road is being done, but the drainage, actual drainage.
It drains to the beach.
Drains to the beach, okay.
It's natural drain.
The natural drain, okay.
Which is by far the best.
Yeah, and it's, it's been approved already.
Okay, and um of course, I wanna continue my visits with Anna and Debbie. They've been a wealth of information, I'll tell you. Um the uh, I wanna remind everybody that there's an election coming up in May. If you wanna run for city council, contact Debbie. Um the city secretary, you'll have to file starting mid-January. Um those dates will be announced later. If anyone needs to register to vote. Debbie, I'll bring you some voter registration and I'll have them at my house too. Um now, in two thousand and seventeen, I've reported on the Facebook page, my Jamaica Beach reporters, and put the videos and put out polls and surveys and. Done all that kinda stuff. Hopefully, maybe the city website will start taking over some of that. That would be wonderful. Um and um. Um and for instance, like yesterday, I took a picture with permission. I took a picture and Larry, we put it out on the Facebook page and introduced him to the city. And um it's really nice for people to be able to recognize that he's part of our city and that we can stop and wave and smile at him. It's uh received to over four hundred views, sixty likes, and thirteen comments. So that's a way to, one form, to be able to get out those kind of information. I put out a poll the other day about this special presentation. I had not made a decision until I thought I wanted to get everyone's opinion. I wanted to hear both sides and boy, did I. Hundred and forty-seven voted no, fifty-two voted yes, nine had no opinion, and there were over sixty comments. So that's an automatic feedback that we can get from people. And last week, I put out a question about tonight's city council meeting. And what projects that people would like brought up, and I got lots of comments from them too. And um I'm sure most of you were able to um to view those, but if you'd like copies of them, I'm happy to make some copies and show them to you. But um you know, it's just more ways to communicate and have two-way communication with our ci- with our city. Um but you can see, there's, there were lots of comments, you know, some what people would like to have done. For instance, um somebody just said, thank you for asking. You know, when was the last time we asked our citizens what they would like?
I knew it every day.
Well, I do too. Um and she brought out a list of suggestions. Somebody wants a dog park, more trash cans placed along Buccaneer, Bob Smith. Um Larry Benthal would like more information about raising to make coal roads, the deep, the ditch cleanup, culvert cleanup. You know, if we're doing some of these things with with the city website, hopefully we'll be able to put out that we are, you know, completing these projects as we go along. Um more aggressive action towards building the dooms. Um. Street signs. We've discussed it, but people haven't heard that we're gonna be doing that, but that's something somebody brought up. And I let them know that they're gonna be replacing. Um the entrance to Buccaneer, all three entrances. Um let's see. And um just more communication. People are hungry to be heard. So the more that we can speak to our neighbors and friends, I think the better job we're able to do. I think Anna has done a wonderful job, Debbie too, and you know, we hired people to um bring in new ideas, fresh ideas. And um let's see, I had, um Anna brought up a really good idea. I'm gonna try to make this short since she's not here, but talking to Anna. She has a program or software that would cost about twelve hundred dollars a year that would. Um update our SOPs to where um it would always be updated with federal laws, state laws, um county laws. So that all of our employees and police officers are following that.
For last month.
That's great. I haven't heard anything that you've been doing that, so I've been investigating that too. So I hope that we um, all of us can talk to Anna more about that idea. I think it's a great idea. Um and that's really all that I have for you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Martin?
Yeah, I do. Um I do agree with um with Ms. Jones on the social media thing, and and I was a type in my age that. It didn't fit well with it, but I do see a value to it. There's always another dimension that maybe it's good to recognize. Um I wanna, I want to congratulate our mayor for putting these lists together. I know how much work it takes. I don't know how much thought it takes to do these things. I didn't until I ran for this office, okay? Um but what he's done is is, and and this again, this is public information. And I'm sure this will be posted, and it's a good thing because now our residents can see what we've done and they can see the path that he's leading us to. Okay, so I wanna congratulate our mayor for his his career business list and in particular, his new business for twenty-two. And I'm sure knowing Clay, this 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 is a living document. This is just a start, okay? This, you know, things can be added to this, so that's where I'm at. And Clay, I wanna graduate, congratulate you for doing this.
Thank you.
And also our staff, it's obvious that our people are working hard with this list to get things done, and it's obvious that they are getting things done. And I'm here to tell you that in a municipal uh setting that we have, it's not an easy task, okay? A lot of things have to be checked, a lot of things have to be done to get it done, but what's important as a team, they're getting it done. And I hope our our residents can see this with your list. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Mr. Wood, can you come in?
Uh Kyle, did you have anything to say to us?
I was gonna get him next.
Oh, yeah, I didn't know.
Yeah.
But uh, y'all, y'all pretty much hit on everything.
Awesome. Kyle, would you like to address any?
Sure.
Anything? This is uh Chief Kyle for those on the phone.
So can you hear me on the phone?
She's gone.
It's hard to hear you guys, but yes.
Okay, so um I I think y'all did a good job in in putting in some priorities that that we've been talking about. Um just a reminder that we are a hundred percent volunteer, so no one is paid, nobody does anything like that. Uh nobody gets any kind of remuneration for the the work that they do. Um just to to give some some feedback to that, we ran two hundred and seventy calls in two thousand and twenty-one. About sixty-four percent of those are medical calls. Um the others are a variety, I think about fifteen percent of them are fires. Uh the things that we're asking for are really to um to bring us back into compliance with uh National Fire Protection Act. Um we're approaching the end of life on our bunker gear. We're approaching the end of life on our uh SCBAs. Uh we have put in a a regional grant with the uh FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant to see if we'll get some money for that. If if that doesn't fall, come through, then we'll obviously look at other grant opportunities. Um all told, the things that you listed in there are in the neighborhood of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um just for clarity, we bring in about eighty thousand dollars a year in donations. Um so and from that, we have to pay for vehicle maintenance, we have to pay for uh people sending people to school, getting certifications, gas, diesel, a lot. Um so and 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 also keeping up with, like every month I have to get an air sample tested for my compressor to prove that I'm not putting bad air into the. Cylinders and things for firefighter safety, so that money keeps us operating, but it it leaves us very little for for large capital projects. So we're we're heavily dependent upon grants and donations for those those big projects. Um so so things we are looking for uh from the grants, we're we're obviously looking for new SE CBAs. And the goal is to get us something that have a fifteen-year lifespan. Uh looking for a totally new bunker gear. Our last bunker gear we got. From an insurance settlement with Hurricane Ike. Uh so we're looking to to do that, that should give us another ten-year lifespan on that. Um our vehicle fleet, we've been trying to keep that up to date as much as we can. We've done really well on the small rescue vehicles. Uh the larger rescue vehicles obviously are fairly expensive. Um we're nearing the end of life on our ladder truck. Um while you don't see our ladder truck very often, it is very important to us from an insurance standpoint. Um the ISO rating of the the city is directly dependent upon the capabilities of the fire department. Our ISO rating in Jamaica Beach is a three. Uh that's because we have what we have. Um so you know, not having a ladder truck actually could drop us down to a four, which means everyone pays more money on their homeowner's insurance. Um so a three is pretty good. Galveston's a two for for reference. Um very few other volunteer departments are that that good. Uh most of the peninsula is in the seven to eight range. Uh there are some areas of the peninsula that are at ten, which means there's no discount. On their their homeowners. Um so I think it's important that we keep our capabilities up. Um you've got a lot of people in the fire department that have good hearts, that are working hard to to keep their capability there. Uh but just when we ask for for donations, we're really looking for for help because firefighting is expensive.
And you hadn't been able to do your dance.
Uh we we did miss a year of the dance. Uh we did fairly well this year uh because we were able to help, we were able to hold it. Um we were not able to ho- hold it the year before um due to COVID. Um we're gonna, again, depending on on where we go with protocol with the the Omicron and other variants. We're gonna plan to do it again this year, uh but but realistically, that kinda covers our operating expenses. Um you know, for for big things, we're we're really looking for 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 much more money. I should also mention in the grant package we put in, uh we wanna get some defibrillator, uh monitored defibrillators. Um we do have paramedics on the department. Um right now, we're restricted to VLS protocols until the ambulance gets there because we don't have. Things to measure uh your heart rate and things like that. Um so we've put in for for three of those. We've also put in for three Lucas chest compression devices. Uh because all of our structures are elevated, we think that that will improve survivability rates. If we get into a CPR situation. Um simply because with the Lucas, we can strap it on to someone and it will do the chest compressions. And we can carry them down the stairs. Currently, we have to stop CPR to carry them downstairs. Um and anytime you stop CPR, even the the time it takes us to get downstairs, that tremendously changes the the survivability rate. Um so we wanna do what we can to improve our survivability rate. So those are the things we're working on.
Well, thank you. Thank you, thank you for your service. Sergeant, you wanna say anything or?
Uh.
Not gonna put you on the spot here.
I don't know. I mean, I know what I'm working on. I don't know what I'm doing. Um I don't know. I would just like to say that as far as the key part of SAD goes, um we've got a lot of stuff that we're kinda working in-house to get done. Um we're, which I'm actually just finished the inventory of our evidence room to get evidence destroyed that's been in there. I've got evidence in there from nineteen ninety-five that, just basic cleanup stuff. Um we were talking about, um. We were actually just talking today about maybe bringing back uh Coffee with the Cop, which I know that was uh kinda big when it first started. Uh we also wanna bring back the Citizens on Patrol program to where each month we would have a topic that we talk about. Um we can address questions over the equipment in the cars, um just kinda show everybody what we do. Um my biggest complaint that I get is that people don't know our new officers, because we have had a lot of change up. We had a lot of people that have. Moved on to bigger opportunities. We've got gained a lot of new reserve officers for beach patrol. Um so that's kind of. One of the things that we wanna do with like Coffee with the Cop or um just different things to help kinda put that out there so that people know who is working. Or know who's out there and says, oh yeah, I know that person, they're one of our police officers. Um so just different little projects that we're trying to work on. Um one of the things we did accomplish is. One of the things we did accomplish is we got our boat back in the water. So we will have marine patrol this summer. It will not be every weekend due to staffing, but it will be for sure major holiday weekends, which this summer, all of our major holidays are three-day weekends. So we will have a boat on the water, weather permitting, all three days. And they will be out there not just for one to two hours and they'll be out there in the evening time. And I actually put Officer Posey in charge of that. So that's that's his project. So so we're going to do that. We've got some good stuff to kind of better the beach, to make it easier for not only our residents and our officers working, but our guests as well. One of the things that Brad says is that that should be a pristine beach park because that's what y'all deserve. We get people that come down here every year. They say we come to Jamaica Beach because we like it here. It's clean. It's safe. We don't allow a lot of the riffraff that comes with like sunny beach in the past. And so hopefully, we can get those in place pretty quick, including better signage to make it less confusing. But I know we are going to continue with the dune parking on the weekends. It seemed to make it a lot less chaotic and a lot more easier and safer for everybody to travel. So.
I know you had talked to me one time about insurances. Do you ever figure any of that out?
I don't think so.
Health insurance?
I don't think so right now as far as health insurance, but I know that we are working on getting some of that stuff changed or worked out. It's out of my hands, honestly. But right now, it's it's okay. I mean, everybody's got coverage. So that's good as far as that goes.
I think the the beach was a lot better last year. Y'all did really good.
Yeah, and and it will be, it it's not going to be the back and forth confusion that a lot of our reserves had that we kind of found out we were, one side of it was being told one thing and then we were telling them something else. So it's going to be clear cut. This is what it is. I said we're working on getting better signage. We're, I know we were talking about maybe getting some of those old ballers that had been buried in dunes kind of pulled up because those are just there. We don't know why they're there at this point. So mostly just beach cleanup and and keeping it to where it is nice and it's safe. So that people can come down and say, hey, I I like it here. And that's what we want. So mostly for y'all as residents and for our visitors. And like I said, it makes it easier when our staff knows what they're going to do. So we have plans and I'm excited. So but I'm sure Brad will fill in more of what his side of it is. That's just what I come.
Anyone else? Are we done? Motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Second?
Second.